The February 15, 2024 meeting of the Woodbridge County Board of Education will please come to order. Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Mohammed.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebowser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: On January 25, 2024, email to the Home News Tribune, the Star-Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Wolferman. Ms. Bourdain, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Any information regarding closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reason for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exists.
Thank you, Ms. Bourdain. The Board will retire to--
Do we have a second?
Oh, well, I apologize. Yes, I jumped the gun.
Sorry.
I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? No? Carried. The Board will retire to closed session. We'll be back out shortly. Thank you. Please rise for a salute to the flag and a moment of silence. This evening, we're going to do a moment of silence for a deceased employee of ours, Karen Brock, who was a tremendous employee and a friend to many, particularly in Colonia. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty, justice, and
Okay. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
No motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Carried. Role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Mohammed.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebowser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Harris.
Here. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of biz received by the Board.
Thank you. Mr. President, for the 2023-24 school year, we opened one bid on January 23, 2024, IFB 24-14, Student Transportation Services, Special Education.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wolferman. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative from Colonia High School, Ms. Alex Rocha-- Alexa Rocha, sorry.
Mr. Harris, Alexa Rocha is a senior at Colonia High School. In her AP and C-level classes, Alexa has performed extremely well. She shows to take these classes because they challenge her, and they will set her up for the future. She's a focused, mature, young woman who has balanced her in-school extracurricular activities with her dance life outside of school. Alexa is the three As: academic, athletic, and artistic. For 17 years, Alexa's impeccable grace and aptitude for dancing was honed at her dance studio where she competes in contemporary, ballet, tap, jazz, and hip-hop. She's a founding member of the varsity competition dance team and a dedicated captain. The team has had a successful year, dancing at the football and basketball games and competing. The CHS Dance Team placed first at Montclair State University's Dance Competition in Varsity Jazz and Hip-Hop. Recently, Alexa received word that she was selected to the New Jersey Cheer/Dance Association All-State Team. Alexa has also been part of the National Honor Society her junior and senior year, and this year holds the title of President of the National Honor Society. She has been involved in Heroes and Cool Kids Club, and she has also served as class president her sophomore, junior, and senior year. She's an active member of many clubs and organizations at Colonia High School, such as the Interact Club, the Ecology Club, and Student Council, to name a few. Alexa's future dreams consist of moving to the city to pursue a BFA in dance and minor in business. Alexa, thank you for joining us today.
So here I have a list of the activities for all the schools. So for School 4 and 5, Woodbridge Township Have a Heart Food Drive, American Heart Association Kids' Heart Challenge, Grade 1 ASL Morning Tutoring, Grades 3 through 5 Morning Tutoring, Family Math and Science Nights, Kids' Dent Presentations Grades K through 2, Middlesex County Artwork Contest, American Legion Coloring Contest, and Avonel Street School Character Traits, January Tolerance, February Citizenship. For School 20, they had their DEI Assembly, Ronald McDonald House Project, Cultural Holiday Quilt is on display at the Woodbridge Township Public Library, Woodbridge Township Have a Heart Food Drive, American Heart Association Kids' Heart Challenge 21st Year, and congratulations to our Claremont Avenue Martin Luther King Junior Essay Contest winner Natalie Luke, Family Science Cougar Compliments, Character Education Trait for February is Caring, Student of the Month, and 52 students earned Honor Roll for marking Period 2. For School 21, Woodbridge Township Have a Heart Food Drive, American Heart Association Kids' Heart Challenge, Middlesex County Art Contest, No Name Calling Week, Monthly Eagle Pride Assemblies Recognizing Students, CMS Sidekick Visits, February Family Science, 3rd Grade Math Mania with School Number 9. School 22, 4th Grade Student Isabella Bordas was recognized as our school winner in the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Essay Contest. Our 5th Grade Students completed the DARE program on January 12. Our Tiger Buddies Program continued on January 22nd, pairing older and younger students together for a classroom lesson on writing. Ready-Set Read Program concluded on January 30 with nearly 200 students participating. 51 students made the Honor Roll. Family STEM Night commenced last week for families in Grades 3 and 4, Have a Heart Food Drive, and students dressed like they were 100 years old to celebrate the 100th Day of School. For School 23, Woodbridge Township Have a Heart Food Drive, After-School Blast Title 1 Program began February 5. Family Science began February 6. Family Writing began February 8. The PTO Valentine's Day Dance was February 16. Marking Period 2 Honor Roll Presentation for 63 Honor Roll Students. Rocket Day was February-- is February 23. Mark Joseph honored as our Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Essay Contest winner, and Change Challenge raised almost $2,000 for the PTO. For School 27, Woodbridge Township Have a Heart Food Drive, Middlesex County Bike/Personal Safety Art Contest, No Name Calling Week, CMS Sidekick Visits, WHS Saffron Alliance Visit for Indic Heritage Month, Family Science, After-School Lions Program, our MLK Essay Contest Winner was Ryland Sutton, and the DARE graduation is held on January 10. Avonel Middle School, Woodbridge Township Have a Heart Food Drive, Sidekicks Mentoring Program visited School Number 9, School Number 23, School 4, and School 5. They held our first-ever Student Leadership Summit. A portion of our 8th Grade Students participated in the NAEP, National Assessment of Education Progress Assessment. They held our Winter Dance Performance. First Week of February celebrated Kindness Week, and participated in PS I Love You Day. Celebrated our Guidance Counselors during National School Counseling Week. Colonia Middle School, Indic Heritage Month was celebrated with a special event that included dances, art, games, and yoga. The Colonia Cup is fully functioning takeout coffee shop run by our Special Education Students located in our front lobby and is open for daily business. This month, CMS celebrates Black History Month. A school-wide anti-bowling program was held with former national champion boxer Cam Awesome. The girls' basketball team made it to the district finals. The boys' basketball team won the district championship. Best of luck to our boys and girls bowling teams whose seasons are now underway. Our Community Service Club led our school in the Township's Have a Heart Food Drive. The 8th Grade gifted and talented enrichment students presented their welcome, wonderful projects at their convocation. The drama club had an outstanding evening performance, and the PTO recently purchased new benches for the front of our building. Colonia High School, we welcomed Ms. Murray as our new Science and Social Studies Department Head. The baseball program collected and delivered over 500 Toys for Toys for Tots with assistance from the CHS Honor Society's Ro Kappa and the National Honor Society. The boys' basketball program hosted the Eric Legrand Holiday Tournament, raising approximately $1,000 to donate to the Christopher and Dana Reeves Foundation. The Honor Societies banded together to host a winter wonderland charity event on December 22 and raised over $600 to be sent to the American Suicide Prevention and St. James Food Pantry of Woodbridge. On December 8, the Guitar Club held its first winter coffeehouse since 2019. 20 sophomores through senior students applied to present their independent research work at the Terra North Jersey STEM Fair to be held in March at Kane University. Nine freshman students have applied to compete in the New Jersey Science Day Air Pollution Mitigation Competition. The National Honor Society participated in the Rutgers Big Chill. The National Honor Society volunteered at Cookies with Santa. Ro Kappa History Honor Society visited Boston, Massachusetts for an overnight historical trip. In December and January, CHS Asian Culture Club worked with Ford Middle Schools World Culture Club on a Lunar New Year Dragon. CHS Asian Culture Club celebrated Indic Heritage Month by creating a Hall of Heroes Bulletin Board and a map bulletin board about the countries and their commonalities. The Snow Shredders huddled to the Blue Mountain Poconos on February 2. They are also planning to go to Bel Air Mountain in New York's Catskills on March 9. The Interact Club collected over 3,000 non-perishable food items in December to support the St. James Food Pantry, and the top contributing classes earned a bowling trip. The Interact Club continues to host hand-in-hand events for each month for adults with developmental disabilities. The Interact Club is hosting a Red Cross Blood Drive on April 24. The girls' bowling team won the White Division. The wrestling team celebrated Michael Flesiano's 100th Win. CHS invites the Woodbridge community to the production of Into the Woods, which will take place on March 21 through 24.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Alexa, for your detailed report. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you have other things to do, studying, what have you, feel free to excuse yourself at any point in the meeting, okay?
Thank you so much. I have to go. Have a great night.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, and thanks for your parents for being here. Dr. Massimino?
Mr. President, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Chiara, the principal at Colonia High School, wanted to send his apologies to the Rocha family. I met with him today. He had full intentions to come here, obviously to support his student, but had an emergency that he had to attend to, sent me the text. So I did acknowledge that. Mr. Chiara does send his apologies to Alexa. He wanted to be here to support you, but there was an emergency, so he just wanted to mean really that message to you.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of January 2024.
Thank you, Mr. President. I submit the student registers and fire report, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. The Woodbridge County Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Anyone wishing to speak this evening?
I got a couple things tonight, but again, last Tuesday at a council meeting, there was a people kind of come complaining about the increase of the property tax. And of course, we know why, so to speak. But again, Mayor, last couple meetings that he said about the building school hope on, that more is going to come up from Planning Board approved of four different sites, I guess major improvements, there's going to pay for those schools, to the school. Again, looks like he's trying to get the whole construction, but he's the one in charge of it. But again, people complain about it. They want to make it clear that he said that it's not him.
Yeah. Mr. Vertar, which agenda item--
Well, I want to-- the agenda, okay, agenda, okay. I want to talk about insurance, number one, insurance.
Okay, insurance, okay.
But that was the insurance. I would like to know, asked many, many times before, who is the insurance agency, and who is the agent that provides insurance for school board for years, probably more same person for years and years? I guess I assume who it is, but I would like to hear from you. What insurance company carries the school board insurances, and if it's possible, get a person's name who's the agent for the company?
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. That's your only question? Okay. I've got a number of guesses. I know we have a broker, we've got administrators, and of course, we have property casualty insurance to health insurance. Mr. Wolferman, you want to take your best stab at the rather broad question?
Yeah, we have various insurance companies that we work with for, you know, health insurance, property insurances, Mr. Harris has said. We have different brokers that work with us, but I don't have all the names of everybody. We use offhand, but, you know, you can certainly reach out to me individually if you'd like.
But you don't have any-- I mean, I know my agents. I've got a couple insurance companies to deal with too myself.
Sure.
But I mean, I'm sure you would know the person that you kind of negotiate in the--
Of course. Yeah, sure. Yeah, and, you know, you can make an offer request, but I could tell you from Doyle Alliance, we have Ryan Tola, I think on the health insurance side, and then we have New Jersey School Board, what's it, School Insurance Group on the property casualty side. So it's, it's a very broad question, you can imagine, but we could get you those answers for you.
But it's not a particular, it's not a particular person.
It's all public knowledge. We'll get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So the lights dim there. Superintendent's Agenda. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
Mr. President, I have 14 items to present to the Board tonight.
Do I have a motion for the Superintendent's Agenda?
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Role call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Mr. President, on item number 14, I abstain in the name of Rutgers University.
And yes, on the rest, or?
Yes, on the rest, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
We're right with you, folks. We've got a lot of paper in front of us there.
Got it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the Communication, Policy, and Planning Committee on recommendation of the Superintendent presents the following nine items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Mohammed, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, role call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes. Curriculum Extracurricular Activities and Technology Agenda. Mr. Sedana?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Extracurricular-- the Curriculum Extracurricular Activities and Technology Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction present the following five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by-- well, a lot of you at the same time, a lot-- motion by Mr. Sedana, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, role call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Finance and Insurance Agenda. Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 13 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, role call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Safety and Security Agenda. Mr. Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have a second? Safety and Security Committee on Recommendation of Superintendent of Schools present the following three items I recommend for the adoption of foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Velez, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, role call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Buildings and Grounds Agenda. Mr. Velez, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The Building and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator present the following one item, and I move for the adoption of foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second? I have a motion by Mr. Velez, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Do I have any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, Mr. Wolferman, role call.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Dining and Transportation Agenda. Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Dining and Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator/Board Secretary presents the following five items. I move for the adoption of foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? I'll just make a couple here. Want to thank Mr. Wolferman and our representatives from Pomptonian. We had a hearty discussion the other day during the committee, and I think from there, Mr. Wolferman, I think we could do some things relative to communication with parents. I know Sue, Ms. Bourdain and I have talked about this among other parent-- among other Board members, some concerns about the convenience fee that the third-party vendor that runs our point of service for our cafeteria service charges relative to adding money onto students' school meals accounts. So the committee, we, again, we had a hearty discussion, learned a lot, and, Mr. Wolferman, we'll be reaching out to you and Pomptonian about following through on some of that parent communication and about the different rates that you pay, and hopefully some success relative to getting that number down. In lieu of, if we're unsuccessful getting that number down, we'd love to make sure that parents are fully aware of their different options of paying for their school meals by cash, check, or, again, sort of strategically paying the convenience fee that a national corporation charges us that we have a little difficulty getting down. But we'll provide and arm you parents with that information as soon as we possibly can. So thank you again, Mr. Wolferman. Anybody else? Saying none, role call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Personnel Agenda. Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources presents the following 62 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, role call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
I will be abstaining on the name Linda Trebowser on item 18, yes on all other items.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Okay. Is there any old business that should be brought before the Board?
Saying none. Is there any new business that should be brought before the attention of the Board?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. I have a couple announcements. So the Woodbridge Township School District Black History Month Celebration will be next Thursday, February 22, at 6:00 p.m. at Woodbridge High School. This celebration is open to the Woodbridge community. They will have special performances from our secondary schools across the districts, and also there's a special message here that there'll be a surprise guest speaker. I also want to highlight that the Independent Club of Colonia will be having their 15th Annual Black History Celebration on Saturday, February 24, at the Acacia Youth Center, and that's at 95 Port Reading Avenue in Port Reading. This starts at 3:00 p.m. It's from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and it's free admission. The doors open at 2:00. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Mr. President?
I, well, we'll go with Sue first. Ms. Bourdain, sorry, it's a habit. I saw Frank's hand first, but you go ahead.
Thank you. Ladies first. I just have two quick things. One, if you'll notice, the calendar does reflect the snow days that we used and has added the additional line of the additional days we would have to make up should we have any more snow days. And the second thing is, the President's Council Meeting is going to be held virtually Thursday, February 22, from 7:00 to 8:00. We encourage all parents to log on and get the information around the district, what's going on in your schools and other schools that you are welcome to participate in. Meeting is 7:00 to 8:00 by Zoom. Email Presidents Council, wb@gmail.com to get further information and the link for the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Bourdain. Mr. De La Pietro, I know you had something?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Kindergarten registration is going to be opening up on February 20. So if you check the website, there'll be more information coming, but February 20, right now, is the date for kindergarten registration. On March 4, from 6:30 to 8:30, the Middlesex County Regional College will be holding their fair at Edison High School. And if you're looking for something to do on a Friday night on February 23, they're having trivia night at the Knights of Columbus at 7 o'clock with the mayor. It's located at 571 Route 27 in Island. If you need information or any tickets, you could text 551-200-7179. I've gone to that in the past, and it's a really good, a really good time. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a fundraiser for Colonia Middle Schools, ultimately, yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. Yes, Mr. Mohammed.
I do have a community announcement. We have a Forts Community Health Fair. It's going to take place on February 24 at the MCNJ Facility. That's the Muslim community of New Jersey on 15 South 2nd Street in Forts. This health fair is going to be from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. It's a short window, and there's going to be representation from the New Jersey Department of Health, the Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, St. Peters University, and many other institutions involved in health going to be there. So please pass the word along to your communities. There's going to be events or education material for men and also for women, and please consult the website. The flyer is going to be posted on the website. There'll be blood pressure, glucose screening, COVID-19 resources, and vaccines, cancer education referrals, and many other health services to be provided. So please spread the word. Thank you so much.
All right. You're welcome, Mr. Mohammed. Anybody else? Yeah, I just have a couple tonight. Myself, wanted to give a shout out for this one. It's hosted by Island Middle School. It's a parent workshop for parents saving for higher education or college. It's -- they have a guest speaker. He's called the, he or she is called the College Funding Coach, and that's at Island Middle School, again, March 7, from 5:30 to 7:30. That is also available via Zoom, so we'll make sure that we get out this information. I know I saw it from-- I know I saw it from the guidance counselors at Island Middle School. It's open and it's free to parents of the Woodbridge Township School District. Again, that's a college savings night. They call it Little Known Secrets for Paying for College. So it sounds insightful. Again, that's March 7th, from 5:30 to 7:30, open to the public, parents of the school district. Two fun ones to close out the night on my end. Big night tomorrow night at Monroe High School, Colonial High School, boys and girls, basketball teams. The varsity teams are in the county championship for basketball. Both, interestingly or coincidentally, playing St. Thomas Aquinas and Edison, those two games respectively. Again, Friday, the 16th, are at 6:00 PM for the girls game and at 8:00 PM for the boys game. Good luck to both the Patriots teams. And then finally, a couple weeks later, on Sunday, March 10th, at 1:30 kicking off from Woodbridge High School and ending at Main Street, excuse me, ending on Main Street at Town Hall, is the annual Woodbridge-St. Patrick State Parade, presented by the American Irish Association. What's nice about that parade is we have all three of our high school marching bands in that parade, along with the color guard and typically the cheerleading squads as well. So it's a good turnout on behalf of Woodbridge Township. Come out and support our arts students who work hard year-round and do a really great job, and add some real life to the parade. All right, again, that's the Woodbridge-St. Patrick State Parade, their 50th in their history. We play a role in helping out with that parade. That's again, Sunday, March 10th, kicking off from 1:30, kicking off at 1:30 from Woodbridge High School and ending at Town Hall. All right, anybody else before we turn it over to the public? Seeing none, we will now open the meeting for public comment. When you come up to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Mr. Vatarik, take it away.
It's me again, John Vatarik, Woodbridge. As I said before, I'm sorry I interrupted you. Mayor, last council meeting, people came in a pause because of property taxes went up, they said between 9% and 10%. And unfortunately, usually, old people complained, but there was young people, they're kind of concerned. He said, we just can't afford it, people leaving up housing, they can't afford it, even anything. And Mayor jumped in and says, well, I think there's the taxes less two years. It's the school board, it's the county and fire department. But again, we all know that he puts his foot into everything. He's building this, he's building that, he's building everything we paid for because of approval of new constructions, new warehouses, new apartments, what you call it. And then the question would be, we all know, I might change it a little bit, we need new schools. We agree with it. Other people agree where you want to put it, but they agree we need new schools because we know population's increasing and has to be done. Education is the most important thing that we can leave to our kids and grandchildren. But again, when he's telling us, why he wants to build it, and he said we're going to pay for it, my question is, why do you, as a school board, have to increase the taxes so much? You got a budget that was $362 billion plus. Who does, who does, I mean, he doesn't do his part. Where is the money coming from? Who pays for the schools? It's probably from regional taxpayers. And again, when you ask him, for example, with county, they build some stuff in Woodbridge, oh, can't make money from the county. The fire department has to raise their budget because they have to put additional equipment, whatever it is, because of high buildings. You know, somehow, something is wrong. Again, I do not agree and I don't approve. You people over here definitely are professionals. You know what you need. I don't like to see whether somebody jumps into it and takes a credit for it, all this thing that it's going to do at your expense. Now people, he says, I'm innocent one. It's the school board, it's the county, it's the fire department. So the question is, why do the people say they got between 9% and 10% increase in the property taxes this year? And again, we know things go up. My question would be to you, where did the money go to? What for? And why do taxes went up so high? That's my, that would be my question. I want to jump a little bit, what happened last couple meetings with the building 10, number 10 school. The way I went there, I was asked to go there from Hopeland, people in Hopeland, and I listened. I look before, a lot of them, you listen, thus you find out what people really wanted. My opinion is, all those people want schools. They're not objecting to school. They objecting the spot, the site of school, where it's going to be. Personally, you don't build something supposed to be there for 50 years plus, that's going to be condemned that you built it. You can't put a school like that in a residential area. They just claim there's only 150 students, Hopeland. You're going to build a school for 500 people. Where they going to come from? We know where they're going to come from. Apartments, gardens from where? Somebody recommended, let's build a school in Ford's Park. We call it Pete Alina Park. That's why I know Pete, all my lifetime's goes to him. And somebody recommended Warren Park. Sound good, bought it in my class. I even recommended KSB.